Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen Board Planning Meeting. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Banco, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie? Mr. Rahhauser. Seven members are present.
Thank you. We are right into public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to state, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Board President's Communication, I do not have anything to really announce tonight, other than we will be having an executive session after tonight's meeting to review Mrs. Kroom's goals for the 2019-2020 school year. So with that, we'll move into our first committee reports. That would be Comprehensive Planning, Curriculum, and Professional Development. Mr. Delauter.
Okay. This evening again, as normally, we had a full slate of things to discuss and be presented with. We began with Dr. Maloney. Just going over very quickly, the raw data coming from PSA, PSSA, and Keystone. There was some mixed results on there, and after they have an opportunity to dive into those a little bit more, hopefully, they will be able to give us a more detailed look at how we made out on that. Following that, Mrs. Landis gave us an overview on our new data management system, Ed Insights. According to Mrs. Landis, and those folks who had a chance to use it, it's a very user-friendly data that allows our teachers administrators to get a look at our students' academic data, all the MAP assessments, study on assessments, those types of things, as well as looking at attendance, making sure there's no attendance issues, any discipline referrals or behavioral issues that might come up, so that they can get a jump on really looking at the students and getting some interventions for them. Again, a lot of wealth of information on there. Now, it has not rolled out to the teachers officially, but my understanding is that a lot of teachers have heard about it and have jumped on their own, and there seems to be a lot of excitement with the staff on being able to use this program. And again, I think Mrs. Landis would be able to answer any questions that any of you might have concerning this program. It looks pretty good for somebody whose technology not good. I think even I could use this program, so hopefully, we'll keep going on that. Next, Mrs. Guyer talked about our special education compliance audit that's coming up this year. Apparently, after our special education report that we had to submit to the state this past year, we usually have to do a compliance audit with that. So they are going to be here on the week of May fourth, and a lot of this visit is, according to Mrs. Guyer, is not a gotcha kind of an audit. It's more of a, are you, are we as a district? Yeah, what am I saying? Focusing on Chapter fourteen compliance, are we doing what Chapter fourteen asks us to do with that? There are a lot of things that we need to do with that. Pre-visit, there's going to be a parent-student-staff audit that's going to be conducted by them. Mrs. Guyer and the staff will need to do a district self-assessment of how they think they're doing with our programs. They will also do a random file review. They're going to ask for just random files to be given to them. They were also, once they get here, I believe it'll be onsite random file reviews, and there's also going to be parent-and-teacher interviews onsite, as well as student observation. Following all that, then our administrative team will have to give a presentation to the compliance team again on how we are implementing Chapter fourteen. And then finally, we're going to do, they would do a closing debrief with the central administration on any concerns they have, or just the outcome of the audit with them. After that, Dr. Maloney talked about our induction program. We had nine new staff who went through either two or three days of training, and that's nine actual teachers, whether they're our brand-new teachers or new teachers to the district. And we actually had six new teachers go through the new teacher induction. In those three-day program, our first day was, they were introduced to the district, given a tour of the district, talked about some technology, or looked at the technology, I should say. Doc, or yeah, Dr. Pratt, Mr. Pratt came by and talked with him about some of the legal ramifications with that. And then Day Two, they had instructional strategies lesson, and that entire day was run by six of our district teachers who put the program together and presented the program to those students. And then the third day, they were to work with their mentor and their building principal. And just in case you may not be aware, we are running a two-year induction program, which is above what the state requires. And then Professional Development, we just really, Mrs. Snyder, who is our new elementary math coach, went over a new program we're going to be piloting this year in second grade. It's called Spring Math, and what it's going to try and help us do is close that gap that our students have on computation and math fluency. And she did probably about a ten-minute presentation on that, a lot of information in that ten-minute. And again, I wouldn't do justice in trying to explain it to you all. But again, any questions, again, Mrs. Snyder, or Dr. Maloney, or Mrs. Kroom would probably be able to give you more information on that. And that is everything.
Questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, we'll move on to the Capital Project Steering Committee, Facilities and Safe and Supportive Schools. Mr. Emmig?
We had a couple topics we discussed tonight. The first item we talked about was Crawletown Elementary. Mrs. Banco, you have that slide you can put up? Okay. This slide she's going to put up is, because the board had asked for a five-year projection of what costs for labor, utilities, fuel, the land and the building, and as you can see, it's up there, and what the total cost was for five years. So at this point, after we had gone over that, it's, I guess now it has come back to the board so we can discuss this to see where we want to go next with this. So, Mr. Eifert, Mr. DeSho, you want to add anything to the Crawletown?
I just think we have an assessment number now, and we can consider what that assessment is. There's land value, there's building value. We now have the estimate as far as what the asbestos abatement cost is, and then we have, obviously, what it's cost us over the past five years to keep that building up and running, so about sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a year. So we've asked Mrs. Banco, basically, excuse me, to come back with some ideas for us as far as what kind of a price we could put out there to try and get this property sold. We have had an offer made to us by the Washington Township folks, which we have to talk about where we want to go with that in the long run here. So to Mr. Emmig's point, we'll go back as a board and take a look at these numbers, revisit things, and probably put some counteroffers out there at this point.
And Mr. Pratt, the school solicitor, was in our committee meeting, and he did state that there were other groups looking at the property. But, so it's like Mr. Eifert said, we now have to bring it back to the board and see where we want to go from here. And of course, Mrs. Banco gets some ideas back to us.
Were there any, if I might interject a question on that particular thing. Is there, the assessment value, nine hundred and eight thousand there, is that a realistic value of what that property is worth to sell it? Or is that something different than what we would be looking at, at practical value for a property?
So that assessment was done back in two thousand and ten, back when the building was still operable. I'm not totally sure what it would cost to have a reassessment done. Currently, through the advice of the realtor, we had in two thousand and fifteen, put it on the market for two, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And right now, it, we, the board decided to decrease the price, I think it was in two thousand and eighteen, to four hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's where it sits right now. We're going to, I'm going to talk to the realtor and Mr. Pratt, and we're going to come back with some suggestions.
So the assessment was done at a time when it was still in operation, is what you were saying?
Correct.
Jen, I should have asked this question earlier in committee. Is it an assessment or is it appraisal? Because there'd be a difference between the two. Typically, an assessment's less than an appraised value.
Right, so that is the assessment. That's the tax assessment on the building and the land.
Okay.
That's what the county puts out.
Okay.
Any other questions on the Crawletown?
Next item we got into was a land, a land lease. There is a parcel of land at North Salem, roughly seven point two acres, and a gentleman would like to farm that, which he currently is this year. He's on a one-year agreement. But possibly after the high school is finished, and possibly down the road, we may need that property to extend, as Mr. Benton said, the CTE program, so we could possibly use that land then. The property is landlocked. An agreement was way, one of the board members, Mr. Rahhauser, had inquired about why we had an agreement, like four or five pages. We have to make sure that all of our terms are clear, and we are following the stipulations we need to. So that, that was the other item we talked about on the land lease. Next item was the D-ten list. Mr. Nelson did purchase a bucket truck. It was on the D-ten list, an estimate of twenty-five thousand. He did get a bucket truck for ten thousand. All the other items, repaint the fifth-grade hallways, the estimate was actual. Replace sixteen existing cameras and add twenty-three new interior cameras. That was, a grant was to cover the additional cameras, however, we have to pay for the installation. Seal coat, the blacktop at Live has been completed. That was an actual cost. Rebuild around the retention pond spillway at Live, that cost was actual. We removed eight carpet from eight classrooms and replaced carpet in four of them. The actual cost was fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty. No action was taken on the ten-passenger van. And the school technology, the HP server, sand server blade storage replacement and labor. Mr. Papa, that's completed, correct?
It's in the process of being installed.
So that, that's what we came out with as far as the D-ten list. The other item, next item, was Dover Youth Football. As you all are, in case you weren't aware, the Dover Youth Football wants to use our stadium to play games on, and the committee decided that, that due to the building, that we needed two more years. So Mrs. Kroom responded back to the committee. They got back to her and said if we would, if they would pay the fees, would we reinstate, let, so they could use the stadium? And she said, no, we need the two years, just for everything that we are. So, so in two years, the committee will look at that again and get back to the Dover Youth Football. The other item that was brought up, Mr. Eifert had brought up, was that the football stadium is in bad need of repair, especially the bleachers. So the press box roof was redone and repaired. Next year, they're planning to repaint the lines and clean the track. But the big major cost to upgrade the bleachers on both sides is going to be an extensive expense for us, because we have to add handicap railing, we have to add handicap seating, and it's possible that we're going to lose some seating due to the handicap. Mrs. Kroom will check in too with an engineer and come back to us with where we can go from here, and what information they can give us, and we'll go from there. Mr. Eifert, Mr. DeSho, anything to add?
Nothing for me.
Okay, that's all I have then.
Can I ask a question? So what's wrong with the bleachers? Is it the metal seating, or what is it?
No. Mr. Nelson, she asked what's wrong with the bleachers.
Can you come up to the thing?
They want to put railings up through the stairway.
So even if you do that, you have to become compliant?
As soon as you do anything, you have to be compliant with ADA. You can't pick and choose.
Thank you.
So that's the stadium. We're going to get information, and so it's going to be extensive repair. So. And as you know, at graduation, if you looked out, there were a lot of people standing, and if we redo the seats, the bleachers, we're going to lose some seats, so.
I'm picking on Chris when I get up. She doesn't want to talk in front of people, I said, I keep telling her, I can't get up, you have to go up.
Okay, anything else, anybody have any other questions on the stadium? Okay, that's all I have.
On the landlocked part of the land that we talked about, does that, does that imply that we can't get access to it from our, our property? Is that land, how would, how would we utilize that land?
Would allow us to use his property as an access road. But I honestly think if we start to want to use that property for, you know, some sort of use, and we want to access it on a regular basis, we approach him to see if we could purchase right away, or some sort of, you know, some sort of an arrangement, rather than just, okay, you can use it type thing, so. But he, we've, I've talked to him a couple of times now, and he's, several times, said, if you guys ever want to put fields back there and use that, I'll let you, you can drive right across my property to get there, so.
That's kind of what I was getting at. I was wondering about the potential for fields or anything like that.
His property is, if you're going on Salem Church Road, right before you get to North Salem, it's that one that kind of sits in the hollow there, right before you go up at the flashing fifteen mile an hour, that's his property there.
Do you think it would be conceivable to put any kind of pedestrian access to it from North Salem?
Oh, yeah, we could do that. It would require a small footbridge to get, you know, across the creek, and a pathway of some sort to get there. You know, it could be as simple as a small, four-foot-wide, you know, blacktop walkway, and a small pedestrian-type bridge. I mean, when I say small pedestrian, you're still jumping through hoops with the EP, and you can't cross the creek, you can't just go out there and throw a bridge up. You just can't do it. So. Coming in off the Wyckoff property, there's no creek to cross. So you could, you'd drive in that way. We can't get in from the high school property without a bridge, because we can't go across the wetlands, and we, and we don't have access from Canal Road to come in, because the property that Harlacher's own is between our property and Canal Road. So, did a short picture run for the high school. So we started, a lot of things are started and completed by now. So this is kind of a compilation over the last two or three months. I did, I don't have a lot of slides, but I have a few. This is our tap for our water supply to, our freshwater, drinking water supply to the school. Just like we did the tap when we, if you remember back in the start of the project. Our water. And this is our vault. So if you go over there now, you'll see the top of this sticking up, and there's actually a manhole on top there. Access port in the top, and you can, it's big, that's big enough to walk around in. And what we have in there is our, it's our meter, our backflow preventer, valves, bypasses, so it's kind of all out there, and that's right at, almost at the street, so. This is the start of our mechanical room. These are our three boilers that'll heat the school. They're in. This is just the start of our electrical room. It was raining that day, so they put a tent up. And this is our, our pool equipment room. The pit on the right there that you see is only about four feet deep, but that's, it's to get us down at pool water level, a little bit below pool water level for our suction, for our filtration unit. This is the start of the auditorium. They're putting steel, so you see we've got a lot more steel in the ceiling. This is the stage. I'm standing on the stage, so this is the back of the stage from, looking from one side to the other. Putting some steel up there. This is inside the auditorium now. Once you put ceiling on it, it looks a lot bigger. We now have roof on there, so we are, we're dried in at this point. This is looking out from inside the classroom wing out towards the multipurpose field. This is part of, the wall, high wall on your left is the auditorium, and the high wall on your right is the auditorium. This is just a further-away shot of the auditorium walls. This is a shot of the one courtyard. This courtyard's pretty much, I don't want to say it's done, but it's progressing really, really good, and we should be, we should be pretty much wrapped up in there in another two weeks. This is just the open classroom section, which looks out onto the, in that courtyard I just showed you a picture of. This is an all-glass wall with a walk-through door to get out into courtyard. This is a grease trap. So we, even though we don't fry things, we have to have a grease trap. We have, we have, it's a thousand-gallon grease trap we have to put in. And that guy got in it because he dropped something, so. I don't know how, I didn't think he was going to get out, but that's what the hands were sticking up. They wanted us, he wanted us to pull him up. This is the top of it, after we put the, when he, once he got out, we put these risers on. Yeah, we didn't think he was getting out. This is an aerial shot. This is actually about a month ago. Brian Bond came in, and I called him, and he came in and took some aerial shots, so I was hoping he'd give me a couple more today, but he didn't get a chance. But, but this is an aerial shot, you can kind of see the courtyard there. This is from the back of the school, looking out towards Intermead Avenue. You can see the drop-off, bus drop-off there for Intermead School in the front, top. This is just another angle. Like I said, this is about a month ago, so we now have roof on the area that you see to the right there, bottom on the right, that white area is the auditorium, and, and roof on most of the rest of it. This is early shot of the auditorium, about a month ago, so now, remember the picture back a little while ago. Those walls are all up to the roof height. Just another overhead shot. The big area to the right of the courtyard is our graphic arts. So that's been, that's been concreted, right, on the right-hand side there. This is before it was concrete. We concreted it on Monday. Just another aerial view. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anybody else have anything for this committee? Okay. Next, we'll move on to Human and Fiscal Resources. Mr. Cook and Mrs. Britton?
We, we had a number of items on our agenda tonight. I had a good, good discussion. The first item that we talked about was the audit status. Chuck, you had mentioned an audit that's taking place, Special Education. We're dealing with the finances as well, as we always do this time of the year. Boyer Ritter's in the process of doing that audit. It was, we talked about the process, it's probably, probably a little less than halfway through the, through the process. At this point in time, it's looking like still that slight deficit, but things can change. There's still a lot of things in play that, till those numbers are all kind of worked out here at the end, things can, can be altered a lot. So that process is underway. We also talked about the next year's tentative budget timeline. So as I've said many times, you know, you're dealing with practically three years at a time when you're, you're dealing with school finance here. We're in the process of looking at last year's audit, but we're also looking ahead to next year's budget, and all the while we're in the year we currently are. So primarily, I, we are going to have the, the budget timeline before us next month for, for approval, but pretty much the same as what it's been, with one somewhat major change. Going to be a concerted effort to try to get us to the point where we actually approve the final budget in April, rather than May. Some of the reasoning behind that is so that we are in a better position from a standpoint of hiring, potentially better candidates that wouldn't be locked up by other districts who have, you know, already finalized their processes once we make those decisions. So quite a challenge, I'm sure, to get through. But basically, if you look at the, at the timeline, a lot of things have just kind of been bumped up a little bit, and with the implementation of Skyward, a lot of things that used to be cumbersome are now a lot easier to calculate and function with. So it's a goal that is aggressive, but that's something to keep in mind, and come April, hopefully, we'll be in a position to finalize the budget. Next, we talked about the OVR partnership. Mrs. Strawsball spent some time giving us some background and some, some detailed information there about what that looks like. OVR stands for Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. And next, probably next month or in October, she'll be coming to the full board to present a, an overview. What we are going to be asked to consider would be to take a look at how that partnership can help us with our special needs, especially our most needy special needs kids, and how that we can help to transition them into vocation in the workplace. More details will be coming on that, but in, in a nutshell, what OVR does, what the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation does, is it gives us the opportunity to partnership with them from a financial standpoint, through some parameters that they set, to help us with those kids and get them into the workplace. So more to come. Kind of in an overview, after listening to the presentation, I characterize it as a minimal financial impact to our district with maximum impact to the neediest of our special needs kids. So more to come from that. It's a pretty exciting opportunity there, so we'll be, we'll be hearing more about that. Staffing update, we talked a little bit about staffing update. We talked Tuesday night about the need for fifth-grade teacher at Live. That position will be filled with long-term sub for this year. The other major staffing need, teacher-wise, is computer science at the high school. Still working on that, and we have some candidates that are in the process there of going through the interview process, so hopefully, we'll have that nailed down as well. From a support staff standpoint, one of the challenges that we continue to have is keeping good PCAs and getting people in that position. So that's, that's probably a position that we'll need to take a look at in months to come here, but there's, I believe, six, is that correct? Six needs right now for PCAs. So the thing about PCAs is, we really don't have much control. When a student comes into the district and they have had a PCA or need a PCA, we have to hire one. It's, it's not like you can adjust staff or whatever to, to meet the needs. So that's something that we're constantly up against. We also need a few building aids in the district, the elementary level as well, so. We also need a few building aids in the district, the elementary level as well, so. And then finally, I guess that was it. That was it. Did I miss anything? That was, Amy, did I miss anything? Okay.
Any questions?
So we just got sidetracked a little. That's why it feels like there should be more.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did talk a little bit about the, the impact of developments coming into the district and the, the needs for teachers and what, one of the challenges, one of the questions that I had in there, I don't know if it's something that anybody could answer, is what kind of impact is high-density housing? How that impacts tax, taxes coming into the district? Tax revenue versus that same, like for example, at Dover Run, 12 buildings, high-density apartments, what does the taxes on that compare to 12 individual houses that are, that are built? And, you know, I don't know if that's kind of information you know off the top of your head, Mrs. Benko, but that would be a question for me with, with Mr. Stefanovic's comment about 60 some building permits, like, wow, you know? So, so we, we did spend a little time talking about that as well. More to, more to come. More, more discussion needed.
Any questions?
I just, I just have one myself, and Steve and Amy bring up a good point here with the additional housing developments and things like that. Are we starting to already see the impact of that with new folks coming into the district? And what are the enrollments looking like? Are we seeing a lot of new students showing up at the doors right now?
Brad, are we seeing some new students show up at the door?
We've had a few new students.
We are being slammed with new students. When I talked to you last night, I don't see any other classes in danger, honestly, but we are keeping an eye on it. At the Intermediate School, I know she's busting a little bit, but yeah, yeah, it definitely is. And, and the hard part is, I wish I could say, oh, yeah, we'll just hire a new teacher. We're struggling to find a new teacher. So, yeah, we're keeping a real close eye on it. Yeah, yeah, we're seeing a very big hit, which is good. People want to come here. That's a good thing. So, yeah.
It's that right arrow as you're going up Carlisle Road.
Exactly. And it affects our materials. Dr. Maloney came in, you know, we have new teachers, and she said, get your check, she could get your credit card out, because she needs teacher materials. We can pretty much find some kid materials, but when you open a new class, you need to, because where's your credit card? Yeah, you need all those teacher materials to go in that class. We have, we have all the furniture, we're good there, but we need the instructional materials. So, yeah, yeah, we're scrambling a little bit right now. And I would imagine with us starting a week earlier than kind of everybody else, we're going, that's going to continue next week, even though we've started school, I would imagine.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Next is our miscellaneous period. For any other comments or observations from our board members, does anybody have anything?
I'll just add one thing. I'm looking out at a roomful of our district leaders. So as I mentioned this morning, the song lyrics that really hit me for this year were the ones about, "Go out and tell our story, let it echo far and wide, make them hear you, make them hear you. You are the folks that need to make them hear you. You're leading the charge and you're leading the way, and I wish you all the best in this coming school year. I know you'll do great things for us, and I think I can speak on the rest of the, behalf of the board here, that we're here to support you however we can, and to hopefully provide you with what you need to get the job done." So good luck with this coming school year. There's a lot of exciting things happening, and we're looking forward to a great one, so. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we have our last public comment period. Anybody? All right. Future meetings. Get your calendars out. September 17th is our regular board meeting at 7:00 PM, and September 19th, committee meetings at 6:00, and board planning meeting at 7:00. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.